How are you doing?
Good.
Happy to be out of here.
Happy to be here, you know.
This is going to be a short sweep?
Yes, I believe so.
Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. For the record, this is the January meeting for the Valles County zoning board appeals. And I'm going to cut a little shortcut here since we only have one case and there's only one person in the audience. I'm going to dispense with my usual speech. And we're just going to jump right into the first case, which is Valles County case VAR 2014-15. Daryl Secunder, eight, 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 seven, Georgia Highway 135 north Naylor. Ms. Carmella, you have the show.
Good afternoon and happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you, you too.
Our only case for this deed will be VAR dash 2014 dash 15, a request by Mr. Daryl Secunder. This is an attempt to reestablish a second residence on the subject property. Property is located on Georgia 135 north in the Naylor area. Several years, um, subject property had two residences on there. When the two residences were on the property, they was considered, um, to be legal but non conforming. But that second residence was moved off the property. It's been over a year, actually it's been several years. Um, and the applicant would like to reestablish that use on to the property. There is the existing separate system that supported that home that was there. Mr. Secunder owns the property to the north, um, where he currently lives. And, um, allow him to give you the story about that residence, but he would like to pick that residence up, move it to the spot where the manufactured home is located. Um, the existing separate system was permitted, um, he we, when it had that checked out and it's still in good working order. There is a well that will support this second residence. Um, in staff's opinion, the property is sufficient enough in size to accommodate, um, second residents. The only drawback is the zoning. The current zoning is on the property R10. And normally you don't find an acre and a half lot associated with an R10 zoning. But that's the zoning that's in place. Um, staff's estimation, we didn't have a concern with that second residence going on to that property. As such, recommended a, a recommendation of approval with no conditions.
Okay. My first question, and it may be that we have to get Mr. Secunder to answer this question, but since we are reestablishing a non-conforming use, and I know it says in the paperwork, he is not planning on using this house for residence, it's going to be for, uh, storage.
Storage, yes.
But should it change in the future and he decides to put somebody in that as a rental, what does that do to county if he uses it?
Really nothing. We're going to have to permit this as a residence, whether he uses it as a residence or a storage. It's a house, it meets the requirements as a dwelling, so we're going to have to permit it as a house. So if he decides to put somebody in there tomorrow, then, you know, the permits are in place, we do so.
Okay. And that in turn is not going to kick in anything to, to have the second residence? It has to be family relations to live in it or can you rent it to anybody?
To anybody.
And that's not a problem, okay?
No.
Good enough.
A residence is a residence.
Good enough. Okay. Does anybody else have questions or comments about this case? Or Carmella?
I do. Um, you mentioned that it's going to go in place of the mobile home that's there or the mobile home is going to remain on site as well?
The moving one that was there has been moved off. Been moved off for several years. And this home is going to go in the same spot as that, where that manufactured home is located.
Previously?
Yes.
Previously located. So the mobile home that's on the, the property right now is going to remain?
There's no mobile home on the property. There's only a site-built house.
What is in the backyard? Can I address Mr. Secunder?
Uh, give me just a second. Let's, let's get to that part.
Yeah, as of now, there is a residence. Um, his parents own residence, it's on the property now. And I believe there is a storage building on the property.
But when I rode by, I didn't recall unless I was looking at the wrong lot. I didn't see a mobile home.
There's not one.
It, it's been gone for several years.
Well, that's what I'm saying was when I rode by there, I didn't see a mobile home.
It's been gone for several years.
Okay.
If I may?
Yes, yes.
Currently, Mr. Secunder lives in this residency.
This is his parents' site-built home. This is the spot where there used to be a double Y manufactured home, which now he wants to move this house to this spot.
And there's a house in front of that now? Right there?
On, on this property, there's only that residence. It's an acre and a half.
I've got a question, Carmella.
Please, go ahead.
Carmella, what, uh, regulation would require, uh, the establishment of a non-conforming use where you would have to have relatives stay on the property, like you just mentioned? What, what, what kind of circumstances would require that?
Actually...
This is simply for my own identification. I'm just interested in that.
We do, whenever you have multiple residences on the same lot, usually in our ag zoning, we tie that with family.
So in other words, if it's...
But even, you know, even if it was ag, you know, he... If it was ag, co zoning, he could do this if a matter of right. We wouldn't be here today.
Okay.
Because it's residential rezoning. And we gave him the option of changing the zoning. There are like six options Mr. Secunder had. He could have subdivided the lot, go through the rezoning process, um, and those were, would have been expensive with the survey and going through the...
Divided the eight you tracked.
Mm-hmm. And then, um, the trouble was divided into two. He wouldn't have enough to accommodate a dwelling separate tomorrow because you need an acre, uh, for each lot to accommodate a dwelling separate.
Any other questions or discussions?
Did I ask your question just, uh, I, I guess, um, I apologize, I'm just not sure. I rode out there and it, it appeared to me and possibly I was looking at the wrong place, but just where the sign is located for, for this, um, variance. Just to the right of it is a residence. There's not, not much space there between. And in the back of that appeared to be what I thought was a mobile home to the back of the property. And I don't, I don't know if for sure if it is a mobile home. That's what, what it appeared and with your presentation, I thought then that must be what they were doing, moving that mobile home out and putting this one there. That made sense to me. But on the other side of where the sign is located, in not much distance, again, there's, there's another house that's there.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I guess I do have, I'm sorry, but I do have some concern about everything being there. If, if, what, what is in the back of that house? Is, is it a mobile home? Is it...
There's an acre there, nothing. Going back there, look, that acre, there's another acre, nothing. There's a house to the right of that acre back there on the dirt road. But that acre where I want to move that out, there's nothing back there except an empty lot. So you must have been looking at the wrong place or something? Now, there's a house trailer on the corner on the back there, but you can't see it from my acre lot.
Mr. Secunder?
May I get up there and...
Yeah. Let the record show that Mr. Secunder is addressing the board.
May I get there and...
Yeah, walk over there, whatever you want.
All right, uh, this is where I live. There's acre there. There's acre here, there's acre here, and I've got an acre there. All right. This, this is where a mobile home was years ago, it's been gone several years. Nothing there that's acre. And back of it over here, there's an empty acre, and then the Grand Bay Road. See that there acre, right, an acre there is it. And this is it, except my trees. And the water that I'll hook up to this comes from my parents' house. It furnishes the water to my house and it furnishes the water to this trailer. And there's two safety tanks there. One was old and not usable, but there's a newer safety tank there that I can hook up to the house.
So between your parents' house and the house to the left is where your wanting?
That's right, there's an acre.
Okay.
And they, a long time ago, there was a house there. And, uh, my grandparents lived in it. When they died, I dropped my father to set it. I said, "When you got a real property, it's always something to do so and so." All right, my son put a double Y there years later. And he moves the balance over, so, so the double Y and put these safety tanks there. And there's acre there. I like to say, right back there is an empty acre to the Grand Bay Road. And the only, uh, mobile home is right here on the corner of the X Road and Grand Bay Road. That's the only mobile home back there on in that square.
Can you tell me what that rooftop is in the, the northwest corner?
Right here?
No, sir, up?
On Grand Bay Road, on the left.
Oh, oh.
That's a house there.
That's a house.
Within the, within the, um, rectangle. No, sir, just to the right of that.
Right there?
In, within the rectangle, within the yellow rectangle.
Oh, 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 yeah. Back to momma's, me and father were putting up honeybee business.
Yes, sir.
There's a shelf back there where we store stuff. We, plus there's a wood building there we called our honey house where we processed our honey.
Okay.
So there's two buildings on that acre.
Uh-huh.
That my mother called house to them.
Okay. And that's probably what, what I seen.
And I've been there since nineteen forty-nine. I was thirteen years old and moved like daddy took, daddy took my house. And it's home.
All right. Any other, did that answer your question?
And my wife, well, they've wanted to build a new house for years and I'm kind of old to start that. I'm sixty-eight years old, but I, I bet promise her none. If I can hold out, I'm going to build her a new house. And but it's not going to be fancy, maybe a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. My wife, she, she don't believe in throwing away that. And it's cluttered and you have to walk a trail. And we're going to move it in the house up there and it's going to be for storage. And we're going to build a new house, I said. She said, "What you want?" I said, "Just a new house where I can walk all over the house without having to go through a trail." Y'all don't, y'all don't realize, I know what I'm talking about.
All right, so that's the way it is. Okay, appreciate your time.
Not a problem.
And Carmella, the, the deed was transferred back to the county?
I was just having a conversation. I told him the last deed we had of record was with his mother passed in two thousand and one, where she deeded that property to all the sons, his three sons. And I can't find where that deed has been transferred to Mr. Secunder as, as sole owner of the property. Um, there's three brothers, one died, it's about a month ago. Um, and there hasn't been enough to be done to just transfer the property to his sole ownership. But I actually didn't really have a problem with that, he said he didn't, but...
Okay. Based on that information, do we need to postpone action? Do we confirm that it is in his name and not...
Well, pardon, pardon me, but it, the property is in my name, right?
That deed, that two thousand and one deed, it's in your name as well as your two other brothers.
Okay, okay.
And he's under the impression that his attorney had done the paperwork to just solely put it in his name. It may be done, I just, we didn't have record of it.
Okay. So again, is that reason to hold this up? Or if, if we act on it now and he doesn't do what he's supposed to do and creates a problem, does that create a problem for the county later?
It, it, yes, it, it can potentially.
With all the parties, interested parties and...
It's not involved.
All right, so we need to postpone action on this for thirty days?
And we...
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, from a legal standpoint, obviously, he, he has no standing to, to file an application to, for the variance unless he's the hundred percent, be simple, what, interest owner? Unless he's got, uh, some pro way document, a deed of assent showing that his brother through his estate has transferred that property to him, and then there's a, there's another brother, there's either got to be a quick claim deed or some type of deed vesting title in his name, otherwise he doesn't have standing to even file an application. So right now, everything should be tabled until such time as he's got proper title. Be simple title, a hundred percent be simple title.
Want to say next, Secunder?
All right, but we settled it when my mother died, uh, Mr. Bennett was the lawyer and, uh, all the taxes and everything, Daryl Secunder. And I got the deeds and everything.
And if he's got deeds as he...
I've got deeds.
Yeah.
Well, Carmella, perhaps you need more time to review the information that he has available?
This is the only, that's the latest that we were able to find. That's a two thousand and one deed.
Well, this is, uh, yeah, I mean, this is for, uh, Luell, the estate?
What?
This is...
Mr. Secunder, come forward.
This is, uh, Luell was your...
Luell, that's my mother.
That was your mother?
Yes.
And then this property was conveyed through her estate to three siblings, Donald, James, and Daryl.
Yes.
Uh, and this was back, done back in oh one.
Yes.
Now, um, you're, you know, unless, uh, do you have any type of, uh, quick claim deed out of, uh, the other siblings to you?
All right, all I know is I got the deeds, dead, safe, and possible.
Well, you probably, uh, Carmella, do you have somebody full title on this?
I, we did our research, um, based on the tax system, um, records.
And, and it, it should show off on the tax system.
That's the...
Whether it be a deed of assent or a quick claim.
So you, the property was also given to your brother?
I know, I know.
Yes.
And I was the Secunder's stakeholder and, uh, they asked me, and I wanted the home property. And so we settled, they got their part of the money and my part of the money with, to them, and I got the, the stake.
Well, so perhaps you need to give, uh, Carmella some more documents.
This is, see, this was ninety-one, and this, I mean, two thousand and one, this was two thousand and one. Um, hold on one second. And then, um, so then we got a quick claim deed from, um, from Donald and James.
Yes, you did, right.
To the, to, to Daryl. So that's, that, that, that sells.
That's your Daryl. You're Daryl.
Okay. He owns it.
Well, I knew it, shoot, shoot me.
Just double check it, just double check.
Yeah, I had a while you were in, uh, I, I knew I got all the tax notice and everything.
She's just being cautious, no worries.
All right. Sorry, sorry.
Not a problem.
We went up on a route, girl, remember?
That's my reliance on the Q public solely.
Yeah, well, sometimes, sometimes they'll do a deed of assent, not do the other quick claim deeds because they've done something, you know, one after another.
Mm-hmm.
They're just missing, it's not going to be able to do.
Okay, so at this point, we have determined that he is, you know, he has standing to do what he is requesting us to do. Okay, any other questions or discussions for Carmella at this time? Mr. Secunder, would you, would you like to add anything to the record for this?
Yeah, I think I've done, done told you everything tonight.
Okay, go ahead.
But I appreciate all your endurance and putting up with redneck like me.
Not a problem, not a problem. That's, that's the way this court works, with the focus, not with the law.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, is there anyone else here in support of this application? Is there anyone here in opposition to this application or is anyone here that has a question about what is being requested? Was there any response to your office, Carmella, that we need to be aware of?
Yes, sir.
None.
Okay, you have the case, ladies and gentlemen. Does anybody have any further questions or discussions before I call the question?
No, I make a motion to approve.
I haven't asked for a motion. I have motion on the floor.
He's, he's out of order.
From, I know, from Mr. Al Dorado. Citing criteria D.
Well, okay, we have motion to exempt the request as presenting citing criteria D. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have second from Mr. Flyler? All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous? Good luck with it, Mr. Flyler, I mean, Mr. Secunder. I'm, I'm bad about names, I'm... Okay, everything is good to go? Uh, if you would, stay in touch with Carmella to make sure that all of the, whatever paperwork you may need when you start doing it?
Sure.
All the setbacks and all of that? All right?
She's been nice to working.
She's been nicely...
She is, she is, I agree.
Okay, the next item for business is approval of the minutes. I stand through, but didn't see anything. Does anybody else have anything, corrections, additions, deletions? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as presented? I have motion from the Gaskins, second.
Second.
Seconds from the Portman, all in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous? Good, let's move on. Other items, we have a training opportunities. Who is going to talk to us about training opportunities? Mr. Martin, you have the podium.
The left, not from, the left. At different intervals throughout the year, different places around the state, the province, the government, it's all what they call their planning and some training seminars, which are very, very useful for board members, for which board members who have been here for a while. Problem that we often run into is the needs are up in the northern part of the state. It requires overnight travel, therefore becomes expensive. There's just no money in the budget. However, this spring, the training is coming to this spring. So mark your calendars, April fourteenth and fifteenth. The fourteenth is session one, which is the beginning training session. The next day is more of the advanced training for those who want to take note or those who have already been through a training the first time. And we're hoping to get, uh, perhaps discounts or something for hosting it in the room. But at the very worst, we would pay the tuition, which is something like a hundred dollars a month. So it's an opportunity that is worth seizing. We'll be talking about some more in March, different March meetings, we'll have more information about the details of what is included into those training events. But go ahead and pencil it in on your calendar.
Is it all day?
That is on a Tuesday and Wednesday.
All day?
All day.
All day. From about eight-thirty to four, eight-thirty-five. Typically, they start in the morning like that, but break before actually the time. Lunch will be provided and that sort of thing. We'll have more details for you later, but it's, it's, it's the first time we've had an event like this in four and a half years.
But I think it was...
We've had them in Thomasville.
We, we met, you did one time before, several years ago.
Several years ago.
Yep.
And then we had the State of Ohio planning conference here in two thousand and ten, um, which we took a lot of people to, um, but not in a sense.
All right, if anybody can make it, we would like to have you make it. I will do my best to be here with it.
I've got a question.
Yes.
Whatever happened to the lawsuit when we got sued by Lamar?
They are still pending in courts, all resuits, yes.
Still pending? Have been a hearing in?
No hearing yet. A lot of back and forth amongst attorneys, I like to write a lot.
Keep, keep it posted, keep us posted.
I'll look definitely, as soon as I learn something or know something. But I have not heard anything since before the holidays. And back then, it was simply more discussion. They've been trying to get a hearing scheduled and with a judge who is willing to take it. Some of the local judges are not as willing for whatever reason, some conflicts that they may have, I don't know what those are. So I'm waiting to hear from the city council. I haven't heard anything yet since early summer.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Scott Orinstein for his time on this board with us and as vice chair for a number of years. Scott, if you would come forward, we do have a little remembrance for you.
My blue gloves.
I'll miss you if you won't go away.
Take your gloves. Blue gloves.
He was going to say...
Color to my face.
I'm kidding.
On behalf of zoning board appeals. Rob, if you want to get the whole group...
Yeah.
That's the Valles Daily Times.
Yeah.
Presented to Scott Orinstein in appreciation for your dedication and service to the city of Valles and Valles County zoning board appeals two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen, and we do appreciate it. Something else to dust.
Thanks to the staff. I'll be back, I don't want anywhere. We, we're in good hands.
Seven years, thank you.
Fixing to finish your third year.
Thank y'all. I'm really serving what we do.
We have some great information.
Don't forget, we have an official photographer coming.
Oh, shoot, the official photographer.
You've got boots on. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
You didn't stand in the front, man.
I'll sit next to my boy.
Act like you know each other. One, two.
What do you think of my name?
Rachel Foreman.
Rachel, this is serious.
One, two, ziggy away. Gotcha, let me get... I'll take more. Now, now everything, one, two, three.
Nobody shove the tongue out, nobody...
I was going to say, Rachel, you probably just to give Samantha's...
Yeah, but don't run off here.
Is there any other new business, old business for Roger?
No, we have one case next month.
We have zero case.
All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen.
Y'all will hang around for just a minute, just going to give you Samantha's...
Oh, so you can see it?
Go again? Go again.
Well, thanks everybody for not running out. Everybody, this is Michael Hupansen, he's the media coordinator for the city. And he's actually doing some like feature on the board, city council is about to reappoint or appoint some major positions. So he's getting visually... Stuff.
I want one of those. You're a good smile.
Yeah, I'm not doing anything. Larry's doing mine tonight, but I'll be the third. Okay, cool. Thank you.
We have to see you to make your name. Anybody share it too?
I'm fixing to walk, I'm third. Okay.
Michael, can we get one of that, Carmella?
Yes, of course.
You're, you're more snack than I am. I'm on the top row.
Do we need a selector now?
Yeah.
Should we make the...
What's your hair made of?
And you're going to stretch it vertically, right?
Maybe let's get in here.
Okay, will we just the, uh...
Thank you.
Y'all too.
And y'all too.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Happy New Year, Paul.
Happy New Year to you, Gretchen.